I'd like to call to order the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, May 21st, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin our meeting with public participation on agenda items only. Just a reminder, there's a three-minute cap on public participation, and it is agenda items only for this portion of the agenda. Also a reminder to state your name prior to sharing.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pamela Parsons, City Harrisburg. This agenda is really frustrating to me because there's a lot in it that I don't understand, even though I've been coming here for almost two years now. But the biggest one I don't understand is item number 22, which is Resolution 6 of 2025. It appears as though, and I may not understand this, but it appears as though we are being a tax pass-through, creating tax-exempt status for a private entity that wants to buy a farm and build out a dairy business. And it says, the last sentence, "The private nature of the use of the proceeds requires us to obtain a TEFRA approval for this project." And it may not be what I think it is, but it sounds to me like we, as a county, are helping someone create a business with a tax-exempt, as a tax-exempt entity. And I'd just like to know why we are doing that and how it benefits us as a county, and then can anyone do that? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Do we have any clarity on item number 22? Because I have the same questions hearing what I just heard. Sorry, not meaning to put you on the spot. I just didn't know if we knew exactly, coming from the IDA.
I can go print the supporting documentation the IDA provided if you'd like it.
Okay. Do my colleagues have similar questions?
Again, I just have a historical reference where we are not an entity that is issuing these notes. We are just required by law under the Municipal Debt Finance Act to have a TEFRA hearing, public hearing, as a part of a financial transaction that is done by the Industrial Development Authority. So I think a step to that financing is just our requirement to open to the county a TEFRA hearing to allow for any comments or concerns, just like the ones you provided. So I think there's going to be a time, based upon my understanding of this, and I'm not orchestrated, I just tell you my experience in the past. So I want to make that clear. There's a time when this comes up on the agenda, that when that TEFRA hearing is open, that those public comments are welcomed, received, and provided to the IDAs as it relates to their final determination and issuance of this financing. So I think our only requirement today is a legal requirement to actually open this up to a hearing, not necessarily committing the taxpayers in full faith and taxing authority of the county.
That's my understanding as well. Kelly will print the, Kelly, while you're running away, the attachments. The attachments are in, I believe, the correspondence I shared with Commissioners either Friday or Monday. Thank you.
I was just going to actually mention the same thing, Ms. Parsons. I believe what Commissioner Hartwick just stated gave additional information, probably would have answered your question in advance as to our role and the reason for item 22 being on today's agenda. Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation on agenda items own? Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion for the approval of the April 30th workshop minutes and then May 7th legislative meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Also need approval for the May 7th Salary Board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Controller Bateman.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Hagerty.
On Monday, May 19th, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase or lease of real property and procurement processes.
Any questions of Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none, we'll move to directors and guests. Begin with Cassie Ryschinsky. Good morning, Cassie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. The personnel and salary board packet is ready for your approval. The revisions were communicated.
And we did take action on some of them.
Yeah, we did item two last week.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the salary board request. That would be first, the first order of business.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Hartwick for salary board request, item A, and seconded by Controller Bateman. Any discussion?
Yeah, just for the record, if the Chief of Staff would concur here, we're creating that position under Public Safety, but it's currently not funded.
Correct. This creates the position, but does not actually post or fill the position. There has been a commitment from Constellation Energy to fund the position once we conclude discussions relating to an MOU. But at this point, we have not concluded that process yet.
Thank you for the clarification. I have no other questions.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We do need a motion for the personnel packet minus number two from last week.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie. Budget and Finance Director, Chris Davis.
Good morning.
I have no changes to the investment report sent out yesterday. There's also been no changes to the purchase order packet. Ready?
We have a motion for the purchase order packet.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any questions of Mr. Davis?
Yes. Are there any departments, as we close in on the end of May, five months into the year, any departments that are getting near where you think might have some budget issues by the end of the year based upon where they're at right now?
Not currently. I'll run through the estimates next month, here in the next couple of weeks to get a better idea.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Chief Clerk's report. Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are several items on today's agenda requiring board action. Three children and youth agreements or addendums to adoption agreements, three satisfaction pieces, two standard human service agreements, one MHADP agreement, five public safety agreements, one juvenile probation agreement, one informational technology agreement, an engagement letter with benefits DNA to oversee our health insurance RFP process, two prison agreements, one of which is an extension of our medical services agreement with Prime Care, an IDA TEFRA hearing approval, one work release agreement, and the first 38 of hundreds of human service agreements required before the end of the state fiscal year on June 30th. Lastly, an agreement with Tri-County HDC remains in former business. Given that the prison board is actively engaged in a procurement for medical services, I am respectfully asking that any discussion today relating to the extension of the existing agreement that's on the agenda be limited explicitly to that extension only so as to avoid any public discussion that could appear to influence the ongoing selection process. Lastly, just some good news. I was with Public Safety, Emergency Management, and Elections Staff yesterday throughout the day as they administered our elections. The election administration went very smoothly, and I wanted to publicly acknowledge everyone who worked so hard to make the day a success, and were working until midnight last night to wrap up the election. In many other counties, it often takes days or even more than a week to finish counting ballots and publicly disclose the election outcomes. So we are really fortunate to have really one of the best election departments in the state right here in Dauphin County, completing all ballot counting by the end of the day in a really efficient manner and ensuring our basic rights as citizens to free and fair elections. So thanks so much to everyone for all of their great work yesterday to make the election a smooth and uneventful success. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Mr. Hagerty, thanks for your commitment yesterday, being out there into the late night. Do we have any questions of Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none. Solicitors' report. Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. There are approximately 62 matters requiring board action today. All those matters have been reviewed and approved by the solicitor for action today.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none. We'll move on to the matters requiring board action.
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through 62 on today's packet.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I do would like to have a little bit of discussion.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. We'll now open for discussion on any items ranging from 1 to 62.
So just first, I want to note that I'm going to be in abstention on number 19. I just did not, was not able to ascertain sort of current costs related to negotiation and RFP process versus what the actual new spend would be to see what those impacts would be. I'm not necessarily standing in opposition. I just did not receive the kind of information that I needed to have in order to do that evaluation. And just on 20 and 21, I know that we're not supposed to talk about, I just want to note that they're both unbudgeted expenses. I know that the concern I have related to increasing expenses at prison, you know, we are at half the population and continue to increase spending significantly. When I first started here, we were at about 1,300 related to a population. We're now down to about 800 individuals. And the idea that the budget continues to climb, and the other challenge to that is really, we're losing revenue sources. We no longer have an area where, within the jail fund, that we were able to go for a number of these expenses that we're able to pay for things external to general funds. So I think in both sides, you know, we really have to look at, you know, what we're doing related to our expenditures at, right, the jail. We've got, I think last year, the budget was $52.6 million to run the jail. It's a significant amount of resources, and again, with the loss of revenue with additional unbudgeted expenses, I just want to note that, you know, really concerned about what that impact is going to be. And particularly when we've got a population that continues through some good work to try to be maintained and reduced, whether to close a wing, whether we figure out ways to sort of reposition this from a staffing and personnel perspective. I'm just open to ideas and wanted to note that both of those expenditures were on budget. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Will we be amending the motion to reflect? Should we, should we pull 19 and vote on it separately?
If it's appropriate through the legal status, if I just could be noted with an abstention.
Okay.
It's fine that we don't have to be pulling it and voting separately.
Commissioner Hartwick, Commissioner Hartwick's in favor of items 1 through, is it? 62 maybe?
Yep.
Yeah, 1 through, 1 through 62, but let his, let his eye reflect the abstention on item 19. Is that a far way?
Correct.
Putting it in the record?
Okay.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carry with 19 being an abstention from Commissioner Hartwick. All right. We move on to former business.
I would like to make a motion to table the former business, item number one.
Seconded.
Motion to table former business by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's tabled. New business. Hearing no, new business. Commissioners discussion and action. Commissioner Hartwick.
Yeah, first, I'd like to join Eric and thank Commissioner Priest for his oversight of the elections. I think, you know, based upon the crazy election and the overwhelming amount of participation, which is a great thing in last year's election and the national attention, this election, I think, was one of the more seamless elections that we've seen over my history. And I think we were out there till late last night, I think till, close to midnight, and watching staff, the dedicated employees, and we hear a lot of stories about the things that are challenging here in county government. There's a lot of things that are really good, and the election staff is one that I think is, I agree, one of the best election staffs in the state. I want to also thank all of the volunteers who make this possible, the election workers, those judges of elections, minority and majority inspectors, all of them doing their civic duty in a way that ensures that we have a belief in our democracy and it is extraordinarily capable and is responsive to the actual votes that folks cast. So congratulations to all those who've run. I know it's tough to put your name on a ballot, but we, that is something that is critical in our election process to give options. Thank you to also the winners that have won and looking forward to working with those folks in the local government level that we will need to move forward with in providing the higher level of service to our residents within the community. But staff out there couldn't be more excited or proud of. I just want to also talk a little bit about mental health funding. We're on the eve of a major budget, potentially budget crisis where the state budget may not be passed on time again. And, you know, one of the things that we've tried to do over the years, ever since Ed Rendell was governor, was to ensure that there would be continuation funding for human services despite any delays or negotiation that happened, at least at the level of funding that we had received last year. We've been assured that that is still in the active position and the functions of the state to ensure that we receive those payments. But I will tell you, on the mental health budget, we are facing significant challenges. I mean, we have for years, it's been stripped down to the bare bone. Add to, you know, this year, the potential of not being able to address basic needs. I think we will be seeing the mental health department come forward with cuts in the midst of a crisis related to access to mental health services. So the idea that we will be seeing that absent any significant increases to those behavioral health dollars that need to be negotiated from the state side, this is a time where we know the need is higher than ever. But unfortunately, we are not having that kind of partnership from the federal and state level to allow us to step up and rise to that challenge. So as we go through this budget cycle for our human service agencies, there's a number of concerns that we need to continue to address. We've got the new contracts on the agenda, but again, we don't have certainty related to a state budget. I think we'll have continuity of funding, but there are alarms ringing related to both the exposure, the lack of resources, and the continued needs in which we have that are going to be a challenge for this Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. Commissioner Priest?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Hartwick's comments as well as our Chief of Staff's comments related to the election yesterday. What a wonderful job by the team at the Election Department, working along with Public Safety throughout the day. And then as those results came in, we are one of the first counties to be done again, and that's due to the great work that they do out there. Also want to give a shout out to the 1,100 volunteers who work in our 159 precincts and boards and at the election office throughout the day. That's a rather seamless operation. Clearly, it ran a lot smoother than the presidential because we're just, there's a close to an 80% turnout there, and I think yesterday we worked out in maybe 25%, if that, turnout around the county. But again, it's a well-oiled machine, and I want to thank them as well as our Information Technology Department for the work that they do, and the courts, everybody coming together to work to make sure that operation runs very efficiently. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. You know, we have, I think, 1,100 poll workers yesterday across the county. What it takes to do an election two times a year is a lot, and it's to their dedication, training, the time they put in. All of our staff, obviously, at the election office, but even as Commissioner Priest referenced, all the support staff, even staff on this floor who go over there and support and help, and staff throughout the county that help. It's, it's an all-hands-on-deck kind of, you know, operation, and it's really great to see. So thanks to everyone who made yesterday run so smoothly and efficiently. I also want to say congratulations to the victors, those who put their name on the ballot and celebrated last night. And also thanks to all those who ran, you know, putting yourself in a position of, you know, public service and a desire to serve your community. You know, we need more people doing that, so thank you for putting yourself out there. One thing I just want to reference, during the month of May, we take time to recognize and celebrate the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander heritage. That's the month that we're in. This is an opportunity to honor rich cultures and histories and the contributions from many communities, communities that have helped shape the fabric of Dauphin County and our nation, from small business owners to healthcare workers, artists, educators, veterans, to civic leaders, Asian-Americans, Asian-American individuals have played an essential role in strengthening our neighborhoods and expanding the story of what it means to be an American. We also acknowledge the unique challenges these communities have faced, including discrimination and barriers to access, and we remain committed to fostering equity and inclusion in all that we do here in Dauphin County. Let this month serve as both a celebration and a reminder of our responsibility to uplift every community that calls Dauphin County home. We'll move on to correspondence. If there's no more Commissioner comments. Any correspondence that was received or we processed by the Chief Clerk's Office, I don't see any on the agenda for today. Public participation, this is general public participation. We had our public participation on agenda items only. Again, three minutes. There might be a sign-up sheet back there that individuals signed up on, I think. So if I could get that to call from that sheet, then after that, I'll open it up to the floor to anyone. All right. Pamela. Go, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Pamela Parsons, City Harrisburg. I'm not sure if you all are aware, because that's the feedback that I keep getting, that Capital Region Water is planning major storm water management for the lower portion of Riverfront Park from what is essentially Brady Hall down to Shypoke, just below the railroad bridge. And tonight, from 4:30 to 6:30, they are unveiling that to the public at their offices at 303 North Front Street. This was originally going to be in the park itself, but of course, it's raining, so it's going to be there. And I've been aware of this project for probably six months or more. Yet, when I was at the Redevelopment Authority slash Community Development Authority meeting last week, George Connor and the staff there seemed to be unaware of this project because it would affect county plans for large events like concerts. Because Capital Region Water plans to begin construction next year in 2020. because Capital Region Water plans to begin construction next year, in 2026. And what is significant in their plan, they've had two meetings with stakeholders, and so I've seen what stakeholders are saying about these plans. And what has thus far trickled to the top is maintaining that part of Front Street as green space, as walkable space, as community space. And one thing that people don't want to see there thus far, and this is before the public has even been able to weigh in, is no commercial events and no ticketed events. That is not what wants to be there. And I'm bringing this to your attention because I know of the plan for the concert series. And so once again, I'm just bringing this forward to you, saying it is important for you to understand that this project is going forward, and what I'm hearing from folks who should be stakeholders, they're saying they don't know anything about it. And I've asked twice at RDA meetings, are you aware that this is happening? And they've told me they are not. And to once again encourage you that large events, like a concert series, need to be held elsewhere in the county and not in that section of Front Street. Thank you. And Capital Region Water has a wonderful presentation, and I encourage you to invite them to come to a work meeting and give that presentation.
Okay. Can you note that, Eric, that we reach out and see if they're interested in coming to a workshop meeting and maybe sharing about this project? I have no one else on our sheet for participation, but anybody in the room who would like to share? Just a reminder, three-minute cap. Anyone else for public participation?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. We are adjourned.